When I did get it, I found my job.
This is one of the nasty jobs. Remember you had to fight with the guy that did this the same day? Yes.
I remember you coming to talk to us like this guy, he doesn't listen and...
All right.
That would be then.
The recording comes on the next week.
All right, it's Monday, March 3rd at 6:00 PM in the great town of Lee. We're in call meeting order. Open with public comment. If they have any public comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address, limit your comments if you may, and address those comments to the board. Any takers this evening? No? Okay.
Wait, wait, yeah, I will.
Okay.
Paul, Paul. Anyways, my name's Scott Marlowe for Federal LA and the New Hampshire Show. I don't know, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus. My buddy Steve in particular. So the town has the solar powered sign, right? The electronic sign over at Massway. Could that be used to announce when the board of selecting meeting is? As well as voting and stuff like that?
Yeah, who wants that? That's the police.
That was the police, yeah. And we typically do use it for voting.
We don't use it for announcing select board meetings.
No.
Which is what he's suggesting, but if the police is...
Could it be? It's not the police. This is the town of Lee. It's the orange one parked out in front of Massway.
The town's estate, don't it?
No, that's town of Lee. Steve bought it on a bid.
Oh.
Either way, we have used it for deliberative session, we have used it for elections.
I just, I was like walking my dog today and I'm like, I know there's a board of selecting here tonight. We might get more, we might get more people involved if they knew about it because not everybody reads the e-cry and stuff like that, so.
All right, no, they do.
It was just, I was just, I don't know, I, you know, I don't want to get, I should have asked Steve, but I was just, my dog today had thought of it and I talked to Paula about it, my wife, and she said, hey, why don't you ask tonight?
Yeah, I don't think so, yeah.
See if it could, I, I don't know.
I don't know either.
I know, I don't know if it's gas powered or not, so I don't want it to cost any money.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
I, I do. I feel like it'd not cost money either.
You know, but I figured, you know, it's solar powered.
Okay, well.
I don't know.
You'll love that.
Just a, just a...
Yeah, no, thank you for the idea.
Just a thought. How you doing, buddy?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing well!
Good.
Oh, right. Assistant Chief LaCorto, you're up, sir.
Retirement's awesome. You should try it.
Partway there.
Ah, you should go the hallway.
So we're here tonight to try to finish up with the upper cistern on Elder Osborne. As you know, it had a large crack in it and it's been on the service for a while. We finally were able to get it fixed. As of January 29th, that repair was done. So now we're looking to be able to expend $1,980 to fill it through Buxton Water. They have a 7,500 gallon tank, tanker, four loads at $495 a load. And we could finish that off.
Okay. Awesome. Questions?
What did it cost to fix it?
$4,700.
And that came out of?
Cistern fund.
And we've already done that?
Yeah, you would have approved that much earlier in the summer.
Okay.
Okay. Then I move to approve spending $1,988 out of the fire pond and cisterns capital reserve fund to pay for water from Buxton Water to fill the upper Elder Osborne Drive cistern. Discussion? All right, all those in paper?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Make sure you mark that to make sure we send this to the trustees.
Probably a little late. It's probably a little late.
That's all right.
F. Gaines-Brady, 226 1144, Paul Road. I got a question. Why couldn't the fire department fill that tank?
Um, why not? The discussion that, oh, go ahead, Jeff, you want?
I can answer that. So the, the tank has 30,000 gallons of water that goes into it. We would have to fill it off the municipal system because we wouldn't be able to pump it out of any, any ponds or anything. It would take our tanker out of service for an extended period of time. As you know, we're down a piece. So we only have two pumps that are working in town right now. And to take our tanker out of town, I mean, out of service for at least, it would be better part of a day and it would also tax the, the water system taking 30,000 gallons off it at one time, so. And Durham would have to come pump the hydrant because right now the hydrants don't drain and it would freeze. So that's why we had, we're coming to get, see if Buxton can do it.
Can I ask the assistant chief?
You mean tell me you drained that pond over there on Riverside?
Uh, we don't know how deep that pond is right now.
You gotta draw a lot of water when you have a fire. I don't understand why at least couldn't fill the system.
Question?
Assistant Chief LaCorto, can you give me update in terms of the engine number two? In terms of the frame, any?
We're still waiting to hear back from the manufacturer. They're supposed to come take a look at the frame. As you know, I think there's two or three sizable cracks in the frame. So the, I was told that while I was out, manufacturer came, took a look at it. We have not heard back from him. So we're still waiting to hear from him on, on their thoughts and how to move forward.
Okay. But he didn't say no way in heck can we have this?
I have, I have not heard anything and I know Chief Nemmett reached out to him and he hasn't gotten back to me yet.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I've heard two conflicting things. One, Chief Nemmett had mentioned that it didn't look like there was necessarily going to be warranty coverage and I also spoke with the mechanic who said that Spartans typically come with a lifetime warranty of some sort, so there may be a ray of hope. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Andy?
Sure. First item on business I have is the audit update. We received the completed audits a little over a week ago. I've got copies here. I'll also send you electronic copies and we'll put an electronic copy on the webpage if it's not there already. I have the short version letter with recommendations that they sent to me for the select board addressed to you. There were no key audit matters found, however, we had a new audit team this year, much younger than our previous audit team, and I have a list of reports that have not been brought up previously that they would like to see generated and kept on file, so I'll present those to you and be working on them. The one repeat finding they had was the IT disaster policy. They cannot accept the platform manager's IT disaster policy. They need one specific to the town. As you're aware, that's on the, on public agenda this evening. Started that to take care of it. The other thing they mentioned, and I will send this to the chairman of the capo of the trustees of the trust funds, they do not, and they've never brought this up before, but they made the recommendation that we not wait until a specific time in the year to transfer trust funds, that we should transfer them as costs are incurred. I pointed out that that had never been a recommendation before and I don't know how long Lee has done it the way they have, but I suspect for a decade or better and they muddled over and included it in their written list of concerns. So it wasn't a major concern, but they mentioned it along with they would like me to develop an ethics policy. They would like me to develop an office closing policy. They would like me to codify payroll instruction and some other things into actual policy format, which won't be that difficult. We have, you know, written protocol for these things. We have not put them into formally adopted policies, so have never been advised to, but this year we were, so.
So tell them we'd be more than happy to do all that stuff as long as they give us the audit way before they're giving it to us this year. That's ridiculous.
We have had discussions about that in detail with everyone from the managing director of the audit firm to the people we actually had in the office collecting data. I was under the impression that it was going to go more quickly and more smoothly this year because a lot of the information that we have typically forwarded to them on paper, we gave them limited access to our financial software so they could go in and look. We have, for instance, anything that we've paid in the manifest, we have the receipt for online now, easily sortable, that type of thing. It did not, it did not serve the purpose I hoped it would with the audit firm. One of the difficulties facing municipalities right now is there's a very limited number of audit firms interested in doing municipal work, particularly the smaller municipal work, and the same with assessing companies. We need to prepare for the revale and I have been reading with some dread various town administrator and town manager posts about not being able to find anyone to respond to RFPs for any assessing needs right now. Move forward with that and see what we get. Moving on to the TD Bank transition update, the treasurer, myself, and the bookkeeper, the assistant town administrator, all have logins and are secure now. The town treasurer was going to begin moving accounts, I believe, today. His plan was to move money market account and the special detail account and then move the general fund and our other accounts beginning of next week. We've got the pump back a week due to TD's IT department is setting up digital deposit, but we will have digital deposit in the town clerk's office and in the bookkeeper's office, which is going to make things much easier and smoother for them.
It's like they didn't bother the checks digitally, so we'll have the...
Right. We still have to do, we'll still have to do cash deposits, but checks, which are the bulk of what we process, can be done from the office, you know, same day.
Closest is Epping, right?
All right, Epping is the closest, probably by about two minutes. There's also French in New Market that's very similar in detail. Epping is a straight shot though, and if you catch the lights right, I think it's a little quicker than New Market.
Maybe you can get a police escort or something like that and then you can zip right there.
We stop at Starbucks. Now with town money.
A couple of other items under miscellaneous. I forwarded the board what I had for a breakdown of library renovation expenditures. I had also talked with SMP as to whether they would be interested in coming to meet with the select board and doing a presentation. The information that I received back through the library trustees and I had spoken, emailed directly with Jason was that there is no plan at present to discuss.
I don't, I don't think that's our concern. Our concern is making sure we all have the same parameters for a plan, not that we expect that there exists a plan. Because if you don't have the same parameters, that's just money going out the window.
Right. I believe the going rate for them to come discuss things beyond their initial presentation is $175 an hour or two, so.
Okay, well maybe, maybe it's that the library trustees and the board need to have a meeting to address the parameters and those need to be forwarded to the architect and included in the contract.
That was one of the things, and I will continue the discussion in non-public this evening as well with some legal advice that I received, but I think that is probably absolutely the, the best way forward and the least costly way forward. Not too much else. There are a couple of legislative updates that I've received Friday and today. You may have seen them as well. There's a zoning, it's a senate bill, actually not a house bill, that's coming forward that would fairly drastically reduce the required lot size for houses in communities by state lines who proceed your zoning ordinances. If, essentially it limits towns to using one and a half acre or smaller building lots for towns that don't have water and sewer. If you have water or sewer, you can limit to, I believe it is one acre, it's 44,000. If you have water and sewer, you can only limit lot size to 22,000 square feet, which is essentially half an acre. But those are coming out of committee with optipass and have a fair amount of bipartisan support, so that's something to keep an eye on and if you want the contacts, I've got the key senate legislative contacts for that. There's also a bill that Primex and the two other health insurance trusts are concerned about that would require them to restructure how they keep reserves for health insurance, which would have a fairly drastic impact on the cost of health insurance and Primex and the New Hampshire something or other, the other group that has a similar trust and there are two other trusts affiliated with the school that are urging town administrators, town managers, select board, city councils, that sort of thing to oppose these if they're able, because it stands to add a substantial amount of cost to the...
There's also one in the update from municipal association about ADUs? It was something in the...
Yes, there is a, a bill coming forward that would make it an automatic right to have a, at least a single AU on your property if you have a single family residence regardless of your local legislation and so on. And because of the housing crisis, I think these are, are carrying more support than similar ones in previous years have. Whether there's actual concern about the housing crisis or whether it's just seen as a good bus to jump on. And that's really all I have. Questions for me?
When are you going to cover the IT thing?
As I put in the cover, that should be covered in non-public session according to Primex.
I just had one concern.
Yep. And it's, that's a, as I put in that email, that's a difficult thing to do because the, the templates for municipalities to use are set up almost exclusively as if you handle all of your IT soup to nuts and you use a managed service and a managed platform and representative at Primex that I talked to said just about none of this is going to apply to a town your size operating the way you do, but you should have one, so.
Okay. All right, consent agenda. Any comments, questions about that? All right, then I move to accept the consent agenda as presented. All those in paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I've got one other, I'm going to throw the MS 636 back in here. I need signatures on that so I can send it to DRA by the 31st. I thought, I had copies with signatures on it, but I have the default budget and the formal warrant and the other budget that the board signed, but the DRA wants their form signed. I sent that to preform and that's nice for posting. I do have one more copy of the audit as well, but I'll leave in the town office.
Hey, any old business?
Not that I am.
New business?
Before we lose the whole audience.
Oh, yeah, fellow audience.
The board of selecting would like to present this plaque to Rebecca Hawthorne for, what's the groaning?
No, no, it's very exciting.
Oh, it is very exciting.
It's about me, sorry.
So, presented to Rebecca Hawthorne, the town of Lee greatly appreciates your dedication and hard work as a member of the Lee Select Board, given this date March 3rd, 2025.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right, thank you, that's, I didn't want to scratch. Thank you. That's very kind. I enjoyed my time. I'll miss you all. Maybe I'll come and sit in the back and heckle you.
Sounds good.
Very kind, thank you. Okay, do I have A and L for non-public?
Yeah, it is primarily L at this point, the first few will not be joining us.
So just L or?
L is fine.
Okay, I move to enter a non-public session, New Hampshire, RFA 91-A, colon, 3, 002-L.
Thank you.
Mr. Rebe?
Yes.
Ms. Hawthorne, yes. Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you all.
Oh, I was excited.
Wow.
Well Denise is still here.
And I'm our audience.
Our audience.
Our hecklers.
That's why you get your plaque early.
I know.
Because I knew, just as soon as we went in there.
I know what everybody would do. Alright, oh you had a request of Mr. Andy. Oh, motion to seal the minutes from non-public.
Second.
Ah, all those in favor? Is that a real call?
Aye.
Sorry, Mr. Ruby.
Yes.
Ms. Audrey, yes? Ms. Brunson?
Yes.
Alright.
I have a request for the TA. Based on a topic that we discussed in there, in terms of budgets and stuff. Would you prepare for us... Uh, well... Okay, I'll do it verbally, but if you're unclear, you can use the chalkboard. Because I know it's a chalkboard because it says chalkboard. I need a report. The count code, description. Fiscal 2023. Budget, 23 expenditures. And then the difference. So budget minus the expenditures. Same report, 2024. Budget, expenses, difference. And then 2025, budget, expenses, difference. What I'm trying to ascertain is... Certain departments seem to have lots of money hanging around. And they seem to be able to afford things that... Maybe they should or shouldn't. One of the things we try to do is not nickel and dime people, but certain departments seem to have... Lots of money. So we need to find out what that is and why that is. So...
Yep, I can surely do that.
No specific names. But...
Okay.
I think it's something that we need to take a look at, so...
Thank you.
Um, well, the report that Andy sent, I... There's some things that I ticked off, so hopefully you can get back to us.
I...
And let us know.
Yes, I will send you a corrected version of that fairly quickly. I need to...
A couple of them, a couple of them need some explanation in terms of why, so...
Yeah, I...
The ones that are in the wrong line, that's easy to fix, but some of the other ones like...
The holiday pay one, for example, and there were a couple of others that there's clearly something...
Okay.
Off in the reporting on, that I need to track down.
Uh, the other thing, just to let everybody know. Um, the grant for the Lamprey Canoe Launch Sign.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, has been finalized.
Okay.
Um, so the town is invoicing the Lamprey, um, committee, uh, for $1,970.
That's the... Yes, it was the initial was $2,300 and...
Yep.
The last invoice was $1,270.
Um, the other thing, she just accepted it today, the final report, which I had to create. Uh, I will send you a copy. I don't know if I'll do it tonight, but maybe tomorrow. So you'll have that. Basically, it's a little narrative and then copies of all the expenses and stuff, which you guys already have anyways. But you can have a copy of the report, so you can put it in the file. So, the other thing is I had a conversation with Mr. Bullock. When he's comfortable, um, he will schedule a time for it to be installed and then we're going to have like a... Grand unveiling. But it won't be too, too public because there's only like five or six parties we meet down there. So it'll be a very limited grand opening. But we will take pictures, so maybe if Denise is available, she can come down and take some photos of it, so...
Mine's warm.
Excuse me?
What'd she say? She said one gets warm.
It's warming buggy. Oh yes, oh yes.
That sounds lovely.
Well, that's Steve's, Steve's gonna pick. It's probably Aprilish, something like that maybe. But it's up to him when he's got time to do it. Because there's cement that needs to be go down, there's two platforms, and then he has to mount the... The plaque on top.
I can bring a canoe.
Yes. Yeah, if you want to get a whole bunch of canoes out looking, you can do that.
Of Floccilla.
So...
I have 11 canoes, so I can put them all in.
There you go, but the plaque is going to be facing the road, so you won't be able to see too, too much, but...
I would look in the pictures.
Hmm, I suppose. But yeah, it was an interesting project. Should be... It looks very nice. It's in my garage if you want to come see it.
Oh.
I'm waiting for Steve to say, "Hey, deliver it," so... But...
Alright, anything else?
Um... No, not really, except thank you very much. I will miss you. Dave will miss you too, I think.
Dave's gonna miss me.
Yep. And then that, thank you very much for the service.
You're welcome. Thank you, I'll see you next time.
See you.
See you next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, I'll be there, one o'clock.
One o'clock, yes.
Was I exactly right?
No, I'll be there at one o'clock, yes. You'll be there in the morning.
Oh, I'm doing the morning now?
Yeah, since you said.
Oh, I thought I said I was doing the evening.
No.
Alright, doesn't matter. I will do the morning. What time are you to be there?
Seven.
Seven? It starts at seven. It's so... I don't know, I thought I said I would do the evening. It doesn't matter.
You said you wanted to do the morning because it was better for you. Out there next to your vehicle.
I like to, I don't really care because I can sleep in the next morning because I'm on vacation. So, it's fine, I'd happily be there at seven.
Okay.
Okay, do you usually get there early though?
I'll get there at 12:50.
12:50, okay, sure.
I'll be coming.
No, no, I meant do you usually get there early at seven? Like do you get there at 6:30 or...
You should get there a few minutes before.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 My extra sweater back.
You denied the abatements. Did you want to do as I asked you about them? Can you just, can you say on the other side of the... You have a little way out there. Are you shutting that off for us?
Yeah.
Thank you.